For the regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, January the fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen, please come to order. If we able, please stand for the invocation by the Pastor Easterwood and remain standing, please, to the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of being here to conduct the business, and we thank you, Lord, for the leadership of our commissioners, that they do depend upon prayer, and your perfect will in their lives, being manifested on earth as it is in heaven. And so lead, lead in God tonight, Lord, in each and every decision that is made, Lord, and may each and every person express their opinion, but, Lord, may we always be civil in what we say, Lord. And we thank you for our county, and we thank you for those that love it so much that they're giving their best week in and week out. Will you continue to bless them and lead as only you can, for we pray and ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Our prayers today is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Somebody move where accept the agenda in a form. Have a motion to accept the agenda as published, I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Moss, second to motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. The following announcements has been tabled by staff and will not be heard at this meeting. A, modification, MC thirteen dash zero one Builders Professional Group LLC of Jonesburg, Georgia, request a modification of his zoning condition for a property located within Madison Square Subdivision West of Kendra Drive and Land Lot eighty-two of the sixth district. The request is to modify his zoning condition regarding building materials. The property is located within Commission District Two. Second modification that has been tabled, Mike Charlie dash one-two dash zero-seven Jefferson Hume Incorporated of Conyers requests a modification of his zoning condition for private property located at two-two-four-three-four-zero and twenty-six-oh-nine Meadow Brook Drive and Land Lot seventy-nine and eighty-two of the sixth district. The request is to modify a zoning condition regarding the front and rear yard setback. The property is located in Commission District Three. This item was tabled November the twentieth, board meeting to be placed on the next even Moving down to public safety, we have a resolution request approval to accept the donation from Grace Baptist Church. Major Mark Ammerman will make the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Yes, we are asking to receive a donation of two thousand and ten dollars. It's actually from Glen Haven Baptist Church and the Grace Bible Sunday School class, as well as Pastor Ralph Easterwood. They've all been good friends to the police department, including Pastor Ralph. Pastor Ralph has a distinction of being part of our chaplain program since we started it, and he's also the only chaplain that's ridden with every police officer in the entire police department. So he has a unique insight to some of our needs with the police department. He gives a valuable service to our officers. He saw that we had a need for some new ballistic shields for our SWAT team. We could use two of them, and they raised the funds of two thousand and ten dollars, which would buy us two new shields for the SWAT team, and I'm asking the board tonight to accept that donation.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Glen Haven Baptist Church done a lot for the police officers and the fire department down through the years. This is just one thing that they've done. One of the other things, and I don't remember the dollar amount, but bought a certain amount of vests and some other things for the police officers. I'm happy to say that I'm a member of it, and I don't think that should preclude me from voting on accepting a donation, so I just want to be sure, Madam Attorney. But just wanted to make that comment and appreciate what the police officers do, but I also appreciate what my home church does also. Thank you.
Any other comments before we do the correction of the resolution? Whereas Chaplain Easterwood and his members of the Grace Baptist Sunday School Church at Glen Haven Baptist Church have been longtime supporters of the Henry County Police Department, and whereas Chaplain Easterwood and Grace Bible Sunday School have graciously donated a check in the amount of two thousand and ten dollars to the police department to purchase of two United Level Three Alpha Ballistic Shields, and whereas the United Level Three Alpha Ballistic Shield will be used by the officers of the SWAT team during tactical entries and exhortation, and whereas by accepting this donation, the police department can purchase these shields without using any county RC's fund. Now, therefore, it will be resolved, the Henry County Board of Commissioners hereby accept the donation of two thousand and ten dollars for the purchase of two United Level Three Alpha Ballistic Shields for the police department. This day, twenty-first of January twenty-thirteen, I hear a motion to approve said resolution.
Please do.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bowman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barm. All in favor, lift your right hand. Pass your hands. Do we have a, do you have a little proclamation thing or not? Okay, let's get up here and get the picture with the Church, the Sunday School. and install concrete curb gutters sidewalk at Sandy Ridge Park. Ron Urquhart. Presenting.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Sandy Ridge Park is a designated and approved Splotch Two project. There's a need to upgrade the parking and drainage inside the park, especially in the playground area. Seal bids were solicited to furnish and install concrete curb gutter sidewalks at the park. Nineteen bids were received and reviewed. Attachment A is the bid tabs with the nineteen bidders. Included in the work is one thousand three hundred and twenty linear feet of curb and gutter, two hundred and thirteen square yards of sidewalks, four catch basin tops and throats. When the parking lot's complete, there will have sixty-two parking spaces, and of the sixty-two, three of them will be handicap accessible. Funding is available in the Splotch Two Sandy Ridge Park account. The dollars in that account is one hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. Staff recommends the low bid of Upstate Curb Inc. of Homer, Georgia, to furnish and install in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question. County Attorney, I saw that you made a note looking for a signature. Did everything meet your approval? Did we get everything? Okay.
Yes, sir. The purchasing director did sign off on it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Pretty good difference between Upstate Curb and the other bidders. I think closest thing, well, no, I take that back. The closest thing's almost twenty-four thousand, which would be, you know, approximately twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three percent. Did you, have you had any opportunity to check any of their references or anything on this Upstate Curb, or have they done anything for us in the past?
Yes, Sir Commissioners, they did the curb and gutter at Mosley Park for the parking lot there by the playground.
Oh.
And.
And did that.
Yes.
Okay.
And at Fire Station Nine.
Okay, that's good. I just, anytime that we've got that big a spread, you know, I mean, even, I mean, even the federal government, alas, if you're sure you got your prices right, if you're that much off of everybody else's, so I'm fine with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
One, Scott and Sons is around one hundred and fifty-four thousand. Is there a reason why it was that high?
Commissioner, I have no idea, and I did not call them on it.
Okay, all right.
The, when we put it out for bid, the bid documents consisted of one page. We gave the list of quantities on that page. We gave Georgia DOT standards specifications, of which the DOT and Rocky and Transportation, it was very clear, very concise. I don't have an answer for that.
I only have one. We have the same note here that just go through purchasing. Okay, it did. Anybody else have any question? The resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve and award the bid to furnish and install concrete curb gutter and sidewalks at Sandy Ridge Park in McDonald, Georgia. Whereas Sandy Ridge Park in McDonald, Georgia, is a designated and approved Splotch Two project, and whereas there is a need to upgrade the parking and drainage at Sandy Ridge Park, whereas seal bid was solicited to furnish and install concrete curb gutter and sidewalk at Sandy Ridge Park, bid number thirteen dash one-eight dash SB, nineteen bids were received and reviewed, and whereas funding is available in the Splotch Two Sandy Ridge Park Project, CFPAPAZO two-one-five, and whereas staff recommends the low bid of Upstate Curb Incorporated of Homer, Georgia, to furnish and install concrete curb gutters and sidewalks at Sandy Ridge in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and therefore the bid is resolved, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approve and award the bid from Upstate Curb Incorporated to furnish and install concrete curb gutters and sidewalks at Sandy Ridge Park in McDonald, Georgia, in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The Chairman is hereby authorized to sign all documents necessary. Correction, the Chairman is hereby authorized to sign all necessary documents for this project. All budget amendments and or transfer necessary to proper accounting to this resolution will be approved. Approved this day, twenty-first of January, correction, eighth of twenty-first, day's of what, fifteenth? Yeah, fifteenth, twenty thirteen, I have a motion, we approve this resolution. Here, okay, we have a motion from District Five, Commissioner Hume, go ahead, second.
Second.
Have a second from District One. Bo Moss, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have planning zoning services. A, modification, MC dash twelve dash zero five Down East Builders Incorporated of Conyers, Georgia, request a modification to his zoning condition for property located on the south side of Highway one thirty-eight west of Hemp Hill Road and Land Lot sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-six, and sixty-seven of the eleventh district. The request is to modify a zoning condition regarding allowable building materials. The property is located within Commissioner, Commission District Four. This item was tabled at the October fifteenth board meeting, presented Wanda Moore, planning and zoning. Ms. Moore.
Good evening, Board. As today, the subject property, Bella Landing Phase One, commonly referred to as Dillon Park Subdivision, was rezoned from RA to R-two on May third, two thousand and five, with nine zoning conditions. The applicant is requesting to modify Condition Six regarding building materials. Condition Six specifies that all homes shall be all-sided brick or stone, and no vinyl shall be allowed, with the exception of the soffit, fascia, and shutters. The applicant is requesting to modify the condition to read as follows. The exterior sides of the homes shall consist of all brick and/or Craftsman-style features that shall include a minimum of two or more of the following materials: brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiberboard. Vinyl shall be prohibited, except for soffits, gables, eaves, fascia board, and shutters. There shall be no modular units allowed. Staff makes no recommendation on this request.
Anybody have any questions? Would the applicant, please come forward? You have fifteen minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, other members of the Board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Neil Kobel. I'm with Crown Communities, doing businesses Down East Builders. Part of the reason that we're asking for this request is that, as we all know, it's no secret what we're up against with appraisals and other market conditions, so we're trying to take an opportunity to take a subdivision that has been overgrown and sat there. I believe the original zoning was done back in two thousand and five. It's been a project that just has not been able to get any traction, both on the completion of the development end and the sewer, Cotton Indian Sewer downfall. It's a, it's a completely vacant subdivision. As I mentioned, we are out there recently trying to clean it up, and there's been just a, it's just been a place to collect trash and other debris that's been dumped into the subdivision. In addition, the zoning that we're, amendment that we're asking is consistent with an adjoining partial that touches it. If you, if you look here, and you can see on this map where Phase One, and you look where she's pointing there, there's a subdivision that was zoned about a year later for three hundred units, and was given a zoning that allowed for a Craftsman-style or all-brick home. And so that is, that, we're trying to stay consistent with what has happened subsequent to this original zoning, and also give a chance to revitalize a project that exists. Currently has no, no homes in it. I'd just like to point out that we've also made a deal with the, with the Water Authority to finish up the Cotton Indian downfall, and we will be substantial, providing substantial capital to, for the completion of that project as well. And I appreciate your consideration of our request this evening, and would welcome any questions or comments.
Anybody like to be heard to speak in favor of this modification? Would anybody like to speak and be recognized in opposition? If you would, be so kind as step to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and your address, please, and you got fifteen minutes.
Hello, my name is Thomas Crowe. I live at ten fifty-two Mosley Road, which is pretty much adjacent to the larger piece of property here. Lived in the county, lived in that area for over thirty years. So we're, obviously, everybody that lives in that area is concerned about what's going on over there. One thing I would like to say, though, that doesn't pertain to the property, is to welcome the new Commissioners. Every one of you, you know, you hear you got a tough job. We hope that most of the county's gonna be behind you, and we feel like they will be. And also, our other Commissioners that have been here for long term, we welcome them back too. It's a brand-new year, and we're looking for great things in Henry County. What I did want to say was, before this property was ever zoned in two thousand and five, we had five or six hearings down here and met with the Hayes Properties, who at that time had that property, and we got a copy of the minutes on the thing, and we were reading through those things from two thousand and five. And at that time, Commissioner Holder made the comment to the builder that they, there was a thing of where the builder was gonna apply twenty-five thousand dollars to improve the intersection at Hemp Hill and one thirty-eight, because it's a dangerous intersection. And when they build these homes in there, it's gonna affect that, because it's gonna increase the traffic tremendous. But they were, kinda had their backup, didn't wanna do anything else. But the statement that Mr. Holder made to them was they had made a huge concession having R-two in there. He hasn't mentioned, he mentioned the adjacent property, it's R-two, it's vacant as well. And, but, no house is built on either one of them. And I guess we could, if you always look back, you can fall back and say, well, the economy, you know, you do this, you do this because of the economy, but the economy's not always gonna be bad. And the life of a subdivision, of the life of a subdivision is eighty to a hundred years. So whatever we approve here tonight, whatever you guys approve here tonight, is gonna be with Henry County for a long, long time. My kids and grandkids and everybody else around there that own property, and a lot of us own property, I, you know, I was out when all that was dirt roads out in there and all that. You know, they're gonna have to contend with this, and we just want to see the highest quality stuff that we, we can built in there. There were some nice conditions added in there, and to see anybody come in and say, well, it's because of the economy, and it's grown up in the subdivision, and the weeds grown up, that we're gonna change everything because of that, that's not, that's not a reason, because the economy's not gonna be in the toilet all the time, but those homes are gonna be there for a long, long, long time. And the precedent that's set by the Commission today is gonna follow the Commission for years to come, because if you make these kind of concessions to these people, you're gonna make them to everybody else. How you gonna turn them down? You can't do one and not do the other. And, you know, the biggest thing I want, I know Reed's worked really hard on this, trying to get some stuff, compromise and all this stuff. We just want to see the highest quality subdivision that we can in there, because I've got a pretty decent home, and I know that Crown can build some really, really fine homes, because I live on Mosley Road, and on the far end of our road down there, about two miles from me, they built twenty-four houses that are just absolutely beautiful brick homes. And so I know they can do it. It's not a matter if they can do it, it's a matter if they come here, and in my opinion, they're using the economy and a few other things, that they're gonna do us a big favor by building some low-quality homes there, and that's not the answer to this. And that's pretty much what I've got to say.
Do we have anybody else like to be heard at this time in opposition? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Diane Gino, and I live at one-one-four-one Highway one thirty-eight east, which is right across from the entrance to the subdivision. My house is four-sided brick, as are both my neighbors on either side are four-sided brick, so I would just like to express that, in the interest of me and my neighbors on that side of this development, I think we have a vested interest to keep that development as originally zoned as four-sided brick. I think it would help our property values, and to tap onto Mr. Crowe's comments, the future going forward, I think it would be better for our interest and for the county as well. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard at this time? Yes, sir.
I'd say thank you, Henry County Commissioners, for hearing the opinions of the residents of Henry County that are gonna be affected by this. I was a part of the two thousand and five zoning commissions and all, or commission meetings where these builders were allowed to put multiple houses per acre, where all of the other subdivisions, for about a mile around this subdivision, are all on acre-and-a-quarter lots. So there was a big concession made there, and part of the concessions were brick and stone was to be used on these homes. I heard in the invocation about the leadership. I want y'all to lead. I don't want y'all to back down to these builders just because of the dollar signs. I know that this vacant, this land's been sitting vacant for years. It's not trashy. Probably the trashiest thing that's on this property are the deer that inhabit it. There's been gates maintained on this property ever since it was closed down. There's fences all around it. People really can't get on it for dumping trash and stuff like that. Yes, it's grown up, that's part of nature. But I don't want to see y'all cheapen the materials that can be used on these houses just to get somebody to build on it. The Henry County Commissioners that were before y'all in two thousand and five felt like it was very important to keep the quality of these homes up because of multiple houses per acre. And I want y'all to keep that in mind, please. Yeah, I live in a lesser quality home than what they're talking about building here. Everybody knows our property values have already been hurt by what's going on in the housing market and everything. We don't need to cheapen these houses to make it even worse. Traffic's gonna hurt this area. As Tom Crowe said, whatever precedence is set on this property is gonna be set on that whole piece of property. You can't deny one and allow another and vice versa. So please keep that in mind, please keep the residents in mind when we talk about the entrances and all to these subdivisions, and again, the quality of these homes. It was a major stipulation that it was brick and rock. Now, these builders come in, buy this property, and they wanna come down here and change things. They should've thought about it before they bought the property. I know that there's probably, could be some concessions made with Hardy Plank and all. Let's don't do that. Let's keep it the way it was. It's already gone against the land use plan of Henry County when it was changed in two thousand and five to allow multiple houses per acre. Let's stand the ground and keep it where it is, please. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Lane. I live at sixty-five Bennington Court in the Bennington Place subdivision, which is right off of Mosley, right across the street from this property. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard at this time? Anybody else have any questions? Does the applicant have any additional comments he'd like to make at this time?
Yes, sir. I appreciate that opportunity, and I do appreciate the feedback from the community. And I hear the, the, the comment concerning the major stipulation that was set forth in oh-five, when the original zoning was going on. I just would like to again point out that, that following that year, another precedent was, was set in an, immediately adjoining property that allowed for Craftsman-style homes. And it's not a, it's, I don't, I wanna make sure that I make the point that it's not that we're asking to build a vinyl-sided house, or we're not asking to build something that's, that's cheap. It would be a difference between a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house and a, and a two-hundred-and, you know, twenty-five-thousand-dollar house, or depending on several options, and that price range could be more, could be less, but it's not, we're not asking to do away with the minimum square footage, or trying to get it down to something that's a hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar house, or anything along those lines. It's still a quality product that we have a reputation for, and we certainly wouldn't be asking this if there was other residents in the community that have already invested in four-sided brick homes. We're building in several communities in the county that, when we got there, there were already four-sided brick homes that were standing, and we, we, we looked at the, at the sales pace, and we were able to, and pricing, we were able to match that, and we knew that's what the people that were currently invested in that community were expecting. So I appreciate y'all hearing those other points, and I do appreciate the input from the community, and thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I've got comments, and then I'm gonna have some things that I'd like to say to the applicant, but I'd like to make my comments first, please. In reference, Charles, like Mr. Lane, in reference to the multiple houses, the net density is one unit per acre due to thirty-six acres of green space. Now, the green space, I don't know, but the green space might be, it might not be billable. It might be, it may just have trails on it, but there's, it is net density of one house per acre, although thirty-six acres is not gonna be built on. I wanna clear that up, so, 'cause I don't want people to think that we're, you know, just throwing, it's thirty thousand square foot per lot, which is a, it's a little over three-quarters of an acre approximately. So just, just for your information, I wanna clear that up. And the entrance would be in very transparent. I met with this gentleman this afternoon. I've also met with Mr. Crowe. I'm a little confused in that, on the four-sided brick thing that everybody, I mean, everybody wants it, and I don't have an issue with what everybody want it, but the, the issue with the entrance, the entrance is there. I mean, that entrance is where it's gonna be. That was done in oh-five, we don't have anything to do with that. I also wanna make a comment about the fact that, you know, that subdivision, and you can, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe I am, and I know that Tom knows, is there's interconnectivity between the three hundred houses and this, right, it's knows, is there's interconnectivity between the 300 houses and this, right, it's that road that comes down. Also, because everybody has to go out on 138 at the Boulevard entrance, they, there was not, in my, tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there was an outlet open to go out on Mosley Road unless it was an emergency outlet.
No, there's two access, you access in a parcel through Bella Phase One, and then I believe there's an entrance.
To Mosley Drive?
Yes, sir.
But was that an emergency entrance, or is that a regular entrance?
I haven't seen the construction documents for that, I can tell from the aerial, the infrastructure that's in, it looks like the streets are paved.
Somebody was here at the time, Tom was here, is that emergency, or is that a regular entrance?
Well, it started off to be an emergency thing, and then the, I think when it was passed down here, it was passed almost like on Christmas Eve, just before you guys, you and Johnny Bassler went in, and it's a regular entrance.
Right.
And it's going to have to be something in the future done about that, because Mosley is a collector road, and they can't bring that kind of housing density out of Mosley unless they allow them to come through their subdivision with that other subdivision. If y'all buy the other part, we'll power to you, I just want you to buy, I want you to build a quality house, you know, that's what I want to see. But they can't, if they build this subdivision out, and they say, okay, we're severing this here, and they build a burn there, and they can't do it.
I don't think they can do that, I think they have to.
They can't build that 273-acre thing out and dump it on Mosley.
I think they have to allow interconnectivity, I've read somewhere in here, but I.
I don't think some people can hear you if you would.
Can't hear me?
No, you can hear you, but I don't think that people out here can hear. If you come up here to the podium, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes.
She has it on the, hey, Tom, grab that paper, this lady has it, Tom?
I apologize for this time, but I think it's important that we understand what's going on.
This is appropriate, the appropriate place to do it.
Initially, initially, this property and this 117 acres that they're looking at right now was a standalone piece of property. And another developer bought the property and bought the other piece that interconnects with it, if there is still interconnecting there, and they bankrupted on the property that's on both sides of it. Different banks own different pieces of property. The bank that owns this piece of property does not own the 273-acre piece of property. They're completely, even though it would be up to this builder, I'm sure, to allow interconnectivity in there, and I don't know that, I don't know what the laws are, but I would not think they had to do it. But something on the 273-acre piece of property, if they build this thing out, and they said there's going to be no interconnectivity, something's going to have to be done, Mosley Road's going to have to be revisited. Mosley Road is a collector road. State law says that you can't dump that kind of traffic out on Mosley Road.
Excuse me, ma'am.
So that's going to have to be revised. That's neither here nor there with this tonight, they've only got the one entrance to theirs.
Right, well, I'm trying to make it, I'm trying to set it up and make some explanations, not just for you, but some folks that are watching also. And I knew that you would know, but also I'm going to read it, is Condition 23 on Bill. It states that if at the initial phase of the development permit for subdivision, there shall be two accesses to the subject property from State Route 138. Two accesses to the subject property from State Route 138, not Mosley Drive. If approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation, if not, there shall be one entrance on 138 and one from Mosley Road. So that's where that's coming from. So one of them would be, he would either have to put one in, but I think, the way I'm reading it and the way I see it on the drawing, he's got interconnectivity to this subdivision. But that's okay, we got that, I mean, I understand it, and I think, I think we understand.
But like I said, it started off, is what was going to be approved, was an emergency only, where the fire trucks and stuff like that could go in.
Right. And we've done that in some other places, Annaburg was another one, but anyway.
But if y'all knew that commission at that time, it didn't surprise me that it ended up that it was a permanent thing either.
I get it. Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Permission to have a question?
I'm, I'm, I still got more to go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, I want to talk for just a minute about the 300 homes. We're talking about 135 or 40 homes, plus or minus, in this one. I want to talk about the 300 homes that are coming right behind it, or that may come right behind it. And this is Condition 6 on that particular piece of property. The exterior of the houses shall consist of all sides brick and/or craftsmen-style exterior, consisting of a combination of brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiberboard, similar in nature to the photos, which they are in this book, here, there's some photos, in Exhibit A. Vinyls prohibited except in soffits, gable, eaves, faceboard, there shall be no modular units allowed. So this particular neighborhood had four sides brick. It connects to a neighborhood that has, that has the condition that this particular builder's asking for. So the homes that back up to like your community, that are going to be a lot closer to your community than these are, I mean, they're close, okay, I understand that, Charles, but, but at the end of the day, you know, the Bell will be a lot closer, they are going to have what you are against for this one to have. So in some ways, I don't think that we ought to do a lot of compromise, I really don't. I fully agree with the fact that this thing's not going to last forever. We all know that the developers bought the lots a whole lot cheaper than what he could have bought them for before, so that, that's what actually allows him to be able to make some money, so, you know, and able to do it. So at the end of the day, there's some issues that, that, you know, just to look at and try to come up with something that would seem like that would be fair. I think I've answered the issue as far as the net green space, you know, the 36 acres of green space, net one unit per acre, that was, you know, this other board did it, and that's fine. And then at the end of the day, you know, I've made the comment about what the 300 houses are going to have as opposed to one that's half the size, that are going to actually be the ones that back up to you, Tom, and they'll be able to have masonry, but all siding on the back if they want to, because they could, you know, it could be stucco, or, I mean, it could be all masonry. You know, just because the craftsmen style, they didn't delineate anything other than craftsmen style, which, as we know, can be interpreted in a lot of ways. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call the applicant back up, I'm going to ask him if he would agree to some things, and then I'll be prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
All right. You and I met earlier, I made that very plain, so that, in the inference, in, you know, in interest of being transparent, I want to make sure that we know that, we talked about several things. One, the first thing, we talked about staggering the front, to where the front of the houses don't line up and look like cookie cutter houses running down the street. You'll set at the minimum building line, whatever that would be, and then the next house would set five foot further back, next house would come up, next house set five foot further back, next house come up. That's some things that'll make it more aesthetically pleasing. The other thing was a minimum of six foot wide on a covered front porch, so that you'd have something that you could literally sit on. I know that's a small issue, but it does cost money, and there's things that you, you would do that, I mean, it makes the house more marketable, it also makes for a nicer house. Forty percent of the front of the house to be stone or brick, with hardy plank shakes, you could call them cedar shakes, but hardy plank could be there a lot longer, to be used in areas such as dormers, or gable ends, or to be used in under porch areas and that sort of thing. A 36-inch water table, now, water table, for you that don't know, is nothing more than a masonry up, 36 inches from the ground up, and then a one-by-eight on top of that with a drip strip, and then siding from there up. Fifty percent of the homes to be four-side brick, so that you've got a lot of brick homes in there, that'll put you a lot of brick homes in there. Let's see, look, there again, I've told you about the 30% on the, I mean, I've told you about the acreages and all the other things. Now, my question to you, would you be amenable to adding those conditions?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
With that being said, I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Hold on.
That would be in order.
We have a question.
I'm sorry.
I just, I just want to make a, kind of a quick comment, because I think, Mr. Crowe, you made a good point that this is a, kind of essentially a brand-new board to our jury, and Reed's done a really good job, I know we, this is a, brought this motion, this issue item back from last year, because there were some concerns you had, and you've done a really good job of trying to negotiate it, but I want to make sure that I kind of expressed something that I agreed with, and this is just me individually speaking, that Mr. Crowe said, is that this is a temporary problem that we have with this downturn in the economy. And it seems like if we, if we set the precedent that we are going to be willing to lower standards, there's potential that we're basically choosing a permanent short, permanent short-term answer for a very long time. I mean, this impacts, I do believe houses last for eighty to a hundred years, like Mr. Crowe mentioned. What I'd like to see is, because I won't crown and other developers to want to build in Henry County, not only because they got a good value, maybe because they, we do have a lot of banks that are holding our property right now, and they're going to be trying to move the property, but because of economic development, because people want to move to Henry County and jobs. Lowering standards and getting a better price point, that ain't the way I'd like to do it. I'd like to do it from more of a market-based solution, as the economy recovers and we get out of this downturn, so we don't lower our standards for a temporary issue. I just want to make sure I put that out there, so this isn't something that's just a one-time thing, I just think it's a precedent that we need to be careful if we cross that, because I respect Commissioner Bowman's District Four, but I want to be as respectful to let you know that if I look differently at this, it's because I'm thinking about the entire county, and I appreciate all the work you've put into it, I truly do.
It's not a problem.
Anybody else have any questions?
Chairman, with this modification, sure, now we're just discussing if we're looking at modifying or adding new conditions to the original list, as opposed to re-advertise a modification for that one item, and that's where we're trying to get a, you know, from staff's standpoint, make sure we were clear on how we're going to, you know, this is both a modification in essence, and addition, adding new additional conditions. We'd like to, if this board's allowable, give staff an opportunity to take a look at the condition, to see how we can craft, to make sure that it's being done in accordance with our code and our provisions. So we don't want to, you know, belabor this item, but the addition of things like the, with the porches and the staggering, the modification itself didn't specifically address those items. So that was, that was part of our concern. Kind of man of attorney, I don't.
I would yield a floor to legal counsel to see the opinion. I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Harris.
I'm sorry, I'm.
I said I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Harris, because what we're doing, we're basically redesigning rezoning conditions on an existing condition, and it goes well beyond the scope as to what the applicant requested. And I'm saying I don't think staff feels comfortable with these amendments per se until they have time to address the legality and the impact that it may have on future zoning or future conditions.
That's probably more of an operational question that perhaps Division Director and the County Manager can respond to about the impact. I'm looking at the legal advertisement that ran as a modification to a zoning condition. Of course, in these public hearings, the board is allowed to make a determination based upon the testimony and the statements made during the hearing. You don't have to limit yourself to what is being specifically requested in either a zoning or a modification. You can expand it, reduce it, reject it, and so whether or not staff feels comfortable and wants to move forward, or is asking the board to table it, that's something, I guess, the County Manager and Division Director can make that recommendation to the board, but the board certainly is not limited to just making a decision based on what was requested of the applicant in a zoning, in a zoning matter.
Okay. Having said that, I think a motion would be in order.
I think it would. Only the reason I think it would is that a lot of the people that's here tonight have come two different nights, and, you know, pass or fail, I mean, I don't think we should have, they should have to continue coming, you know, just, but I mean, I understand, Mike, I mean, I, I, you're saying you, y'all need time to look at it, is what you're telling?
Well, yeah, weren't familiar with these particular conditions, I just wanted to make sure, but, you know, certainly feel a whole lot better now the county attorney has determined that the board has the authorization to make these, to make these conditional changes, and we can, perhaps the language, make sure it all fits, we can certainly work from our standpoint. So we can, you know, if the board makes a determination to move forward with these conditions, then we can, we can accommodate that.
I mean, I would, Mr. Chair, I would respectfully, I would think that we would want to have as much staff involvement as we absolutely can, if that's, there again, I, so I'm going to make a motion, as bad as I hate to, because I'm ready to make the other one, but I'm going to make a motion that we table it and give them an opportunity to take a look at this, and then, you know, bring it back at, I would suppose, the next night meeting. I understand your, what you're thinking, Tommy, I just don't know that I, I just don't know that we shouldn't give staff the opportunity to look at, because I threw a lot of stuff at you tonight. I mean, this is not the norm where we, you know, we've gone to, you know, 50%, we made actually one, two, three, four, five, six additions to a, to one that didn't have, but nine to start with. So I would think maybe we need, I'm going to still make the motion that we table it until they've had an opportunity to look at it.
We have a motion by the Commission for Next Report to table this said issue for a second. Motion dies for lack of second.
All right, then I'll make a motion. This one will probably die too, but I'm going to make it just a second. Okay. With the conditions that I've outlined, and I can give those to you after the meeting, you got them recorded, that's been agreed to by the applicant, I make a motion that we approve it based on those conditions that I've added to the applicant's request.
Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second? I hear no second. The motion died for lack of second. Do I hear a consequential motion from anyone?
Chairman, I make a motion that we deny the request that's been put forward.
We have a motion to deny, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? We had a motion by Chairman Preston, a second by District Three. Further discussion? No discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Left of Records indicate that had five voting in favor of the motion, one opposed. An ordinance by Henry County, Georgia, to amend Chapter 12, Section 12.04.00 and 12.04.03, Appeal of Zoning Advisory Board and Administrative Actions and Application Requirement as it pertains to the appeal process in accordance with Section 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. Presenter, Cheryl Hobson Matthews. Presenter, Sheriff Hopson Matthews. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. As Chairman Smith has indicated, we have an ordinance request before you all this evening regarding the process for accepting appeal applications based on zoning advisory board decisions and/or staff decisions made within the Planning and Zoning Services Division. For the edification of the new board members, I'll ask the previous board members to just bear with me as I walk through how we got to this step, and I certainly will be amenable to answering any questions if anything doesn't make sense. Currently in our Code of Ordinances, we do have provisions for individuals who feel like an error has been made or feel like a decision that has been rendered by the Zoning Advisory Board has been an error. The current procedures were not very clear, and they didn't give a lot of guidance on once an application was filed, next steps, and what procedures should be as far as making sure that items are received correctly and then scheduled accordingly. Planning staff worked diligently with our county attorney and our county clerk to make sure that we had a process that was doable by not only those departments that were receiving the appeal applications, but also in order for the clerk to ensure that the actual appeals were being added to the agenda in a timely manner. What we have done is go back based on lots of dialogue and conversation with the board, looking at previous meetings that we've held, and then looking at surrounding jurisdictions to determine, one, if our appeal process and the fees that we collect were comparable to other jurisdictions. We did find that the $300 fee that we do collect for appeals are comparable with other jurisdictions, and in some cases were a smaller amount than what some jurisdictions collect. When staff originally presented the request, there was a lot of conversation from the board regarding whether a decision being rendered by the board was overturned if an applicant would be entitled to a refund. Planning staff at that time felt that a refund was not warranted because there was staff time that went into actual applications, there was the posting of properties, there were a number of occasions where we may have, may would have been responsible for getting with our county attorney, going over information, and then we're also responsible for notifying all property owners posting properties and doing legal advertisements, which also result in cost. So, planning staff continues to recommend that the $300 fee remains as part of the application process. We did also consider refunding a portion of the monies that are collected for appeals, and you will see in the new recommendation from staff, we do have language that should the Board of Commissioners overturn a decision, that the applicant has 30 days to file for a refund back to the Board of Commissioners, where they can apply for at least 75% of that $300 fee that is collected. So, we are still retaining a portion of the funds to cover things like legal ads and sign postings. One other thing that was very critical that we talked about was making sure that individuals who applied or who submitted an appeal application had a legal standing. So, our county attorney did include language, which now will be a part of the code should the board adopt it or approve it, which states only persons or entities that have legal standing in the challenged action shall be permitted to file an appeal under this code section. We're able then to make sure that we don't have a lot of individuals that may be filing applications that have no legal standing to file those applications. So, we will make sure that whenever applications are filed, we do get with our county attorney to make sure that it passes that test. We also, I also wanted to clarify, I have included for you a sample package if an individual were to file an application. It includes a cover letter indicating that we receive your application, the appeal has been filed, and I inadvertently did not correct that the fee should be $300, so in the letter it actually states 100. So, if the board does approve it, I will make that correction. We have also included a sheet, which is a log sheet, which was one concern raised by the board when this request previously came back before the board, so that we can keep a log of when the actual application is filed and where the application stands. We have also included language to ensure that once an application is filed, that it is immediately sent to the department that will be responsible for responding to the request. And what I mean by responding is whatever department in which the appeal has been filed, they will be the department responsible for preparing the executive summary, posting the property, advertising the property, and then providing the information to the clerk for inclusion on the next available board agenda. Whichever department is affected by the appeal, that department will be responsible for being present at the meeting and presenting the information to the board for your review. I don't think that I've omitted anything, so I'll just answer any questions that you all may have.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I just appreciate you guys, because I know we did have a lengthy discussion on this last year, and I think, you know, I think you guys summarized the points pretty good there, and I appreciate y'all addressing those items.
Thank you.
Any other question? You have a question? Yes, ma'am. Since this is an ordinance and not a resolution, do we have anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do we have anybody here that would like to be heard opposing this ordinance? Haven't seen none or heard none.
Sure, I noticed that you have some of the appeal fees for the other counties. Does any of the other counties have a refund mechanism?
We were not able to find, of all the counties that are listed, none of those counties have refund mechanisms in place. Once the fees are paid, they are done and refundable.
Anybody entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as published?
Somebody.
We have a motion by Commissioner Preston. Do I hear a second? Thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Barm. Any further discussion? All in favor of said ordinance, raise your right hand. I'm showing, I'm showing one, two, three, four in favor. All opposed? Raise your right hand. We have two. Did you get that for the record on who did what, Madam Clerk? Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution request award of a bid for a walk-in freezer at Heritage Senior Center. Rod Gray, personal director. Mr. Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As stated, I have a request to award the bid for the replacement of the walk-in freezer at the Heritage Senior Center. The existing freezer has been repaired several times, and this unit is no longer able to maintain the cooling requirements. The recommendation from the staff is to award the bid for the replacement freezer to JCO Services with the lowest bid of $16,500. Funding for this expenditure would come from the county's contingency account.
Any questions? I entertain a motion to approve this award.
Somebody.
I have a motion to my right with District Three, I have a second to my left, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six and zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senior Services, a resolution request approval of an amendment to the aging sub-grant contract with ERC. Diane Reed.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. I am here, as stated, to request acceptance of an amendment to our contract with the Atlanta Regional Commission. It is a slight increase, so hopefully you will be willing to accept that increase.
Anybody have any questions? Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion from District Four? Oh, you have a question or a motion?
No, no, I said move to approve.
Got you. We have a motion from District Four, second from District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carry six and zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a board appointment. We had our first meeting last week. I'm just going to share this with you. They had a bylaw change last year. The chairman of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, starting last year, is now the chairman of the Board of Health, which doesn't off the cuff sound like a bad thing. But being a rookie up here, being my, starting into my third week, day 15, I come into my office and I got this many things, and I asked Shay, the clerk, and I took a minute and I said, "This statement is signed by the chairman of the Board of Health." And she said, "You are that." So, needless to say, I don't, if you go in a restaurant, every food permit is got my name on it. And if you get to one that's not readable, that's probably 2084 I signed. But anyway, having said that, Dr. Orlando Lopez is on that board, and his term expires, and he has indicated that he would like to continue. And the good thing is, if you know the makeup of the board, they've got six, seven, eight different categories. You've got a consumer advocate, you've got a nurse, you've got a doctor, you've got the chairman, and then you have to have a doctor. And Dr. Lopez, thankful for us, is willing to serve in that capacity, so since he would do that, I would entertain a motion that we reappoint Dr. Orlando Lopez to the Henry County Board of Health, and his term would end December 31, 2017. Do we have a motion, District One? Do we have a second for District Two? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Carry six and zero. Madam Clerk, was anybody signing for public comments tonight? Do we have any comments from the County Manager?
No, sir.
As busy as you were today, you don't have any comments. He put out 32 fires.
May not be appropriate.
I just said that. County Attorney, you have any comments?
No, sir.
I'm going to continue to say courtesy. I was in your office about seven, eight, nine times today, and you was busy as a bee. So, that's a good thing. Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, January 21, all county offices will be closed in his reverend Sir Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Tuesday, February 5 at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, February 19 at 6:30 p.m. with regular board meetings. Do we, I understand we don't have anything for executive session tonight. Would that be correct, counsel? Thank you. So, obviously, we're going to eliminate that, reconvene. We don't have to have the approval of affidavits because we didn't go into executive session. Does somebody move adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one comment. I know you spoke before that we may make some comments.
I did. I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I just, I got a comment I'd like to make, and it's in reference to our business license department and to our, to the tax assessors department. And I don't know who, where this falls. I had a gentleman come to my office, has done some work for me in the past, is a small contractor, and he's been, he's been, he's got several pieces of property, but he's got hit in this economic downturn like a lot of other people, and I'm getting a, is that this one? You told me you'd give me this one, I don't know.
If it's in reference, if it's a reference to what you spoke about?
Yes, sir.
It was taken care of today on that issue with that particular citizen?
Okay.
And there was a temporary employee in there, and they just thought, when they saw that particular item, as it was past due?
Okay, well, good.
It had no reference, and I gave him a call.
So, that would be handled similarly from now on?
It is taken care of, but it was a mix-up at the time, and it was just a temporary employee there that...
Do you have any more comments? Should I? I withdraw my comment. For the new guys on the board, there was a couple of times, and one of them was in reference to Hemi engines, and I bring that up occasionally when I, guys out there, because I've stuck my foot so far in my mouth that I felt it tickling other parts of my anatomy. But what, the County Manager was trying to let me know just very easily that that was not the case, and so I asked him if I got into that again, would he just give me this signal? Because I'm known to ramble on a little bit, so, anyway, I appreciate that, Mr. County Manager, and that situation been handled, and everything's okay.
I think we all have that same problem. My wife has a habit, if I get something on my lip, like eating, she'll do this, and I know one time she was doing this, and I'm doing this, and it was nothing, she's just doing this. But, do we have a commission that I can make a comment this time? If not, will somebody move adjourn?
I move adjourn.
All in, have a second?
Have a second.
We're not going to sketch that, but all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out.